Mr. President, whoever you're ready.
Let's stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome everyone to our MSD Pike Township School Board Meeting, January 23rd. First we have up is our For the Good of the Cause. If anyone in the community would like to use this platform, we have three minutes to say anything for the good of the cause. Alright, next we have Spotlight on Pike, Ms. Sarah Dorsey.
Evening, it's wonderful to see you all again. We want to congratulate Pierce Collins, Shay Shern, Don Ward, and Logan Young for making Academic All-State. Additionally, Ife Adiowa, DiReese Elliott, Keandre Irving, and Shay Shern were named Indiana Football Coaches Association Region Seven All-Stars. So we're extremely happy for them. We want to congratulate Senior Jasmine Solis for being selected as a candidate for the Kiwanis Abe Lincoln Scholarship, for seniors who overcome tremendous obstacles. She excelled in her interview demonstrating remarkable resilience and poise throughout the process. And the four finalists will be announced at luncheon in February, so we're extremely proud of Jasmine. Pike High School alum Kareem John was recently recognized by IMPD with a Community Lifesaving Award for his lifesaving efforts while rescuing a driver who crashed into a retention pond on December 28th. Per Fox 59's coverage, John's wife noticed headlights coming out of the water and saw a car in the pond as they drove by. As soon as they realized that the driver was still in the car, without hesitation, he jumped in the water and rescued the driver. So, we commend him for his bravery and congratulate him on his well-deserved award. Last but never least, we want to thank the generous donors listed on this evening's agenda. Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church donated $300 worth of gift cards for families in need to Snacks Crossing. Scott Benedict donated $650 to the Exceptional Learners Class at the Natano Jones Early Learning Center. And the Pike Township Educational Foundation donated a total of $2,398 to fund a Century Bend and Exceptional Learners at NJALC and purchase Canova Pike High School. We're extremely grateful for their support.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we have Reports to the Board, A, Acquisition Offered City of Indianapolis, Mr. Gruber and Mr. Quakkenbusch.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to share with you a public works project that's going on on 79th Street that is going to impact the MSD of Pike Township. Back in October, we were notified by the city that they are going to do a culvert replacement project along 79th Street, just adjacent to the Early Learning Center. As part of that project, they told us that we would need to sell them a small parcel of land along 79th Street, and that they would also need a temporary easement on an additional piece of the property in order to perform that construction. After sharing this with the superintendent and also reaching out to our legal team, we followed up with some questions that we had about the project and about the documents that we received from the city. After some feedback from Barnes &amp; Thornburg, one of the feedback that we got was that we wanted to find out the timeframe. And so, the Public Works Department got back to us so that that project needed to take place in the summertime after school is out. And that the reason that they need to acquire the property is because there's going to be ongoing maintenance of that culvert, and they want to make sure that they have accessibility whenever they may need it. So, in discussing this with Dr. Young, we went back and said, "Is there any way we could do this under an MOU? We're not really interested in selling the property. Can we just do an MOU, give you the temporary easement for the duration of the project, and then whenever you need to come back, just let us know?" We sent that back to the city, and they recently came back to us and said, "No. We must acquire this small parcel of land, and we also need that temporary easement." So, in your packet, I've provided some documents for you, including a kind of aerial shot of what this is going to impact along 79th Street. The area in yellow is the area that is going to be acquired by the city. And it is just right along 79th Street, between 79th Street and our sidewalk on that property, on the north side of the property. The area in purple is where there will be a temporary easement. So they will need access to that area during the construction process. And what's gonna, what the finished product, what it'll look like is after that culvert is placed on our side of 79th Street, so on the south side of 79th Street, there will be some riprap, which is those large stones that you see in culverts and ditches, to prevent any future erosion that may happen if we get a sizable rain or a flood event where a lot of water is flowing through there. We don't want any damage to the property, and the riprap is going to help protect us there. I've also outlined in the document here what that compensation is going to look like from the city. They will purchase the parcel for a total of $2,700, and as compensation for the temporary easement, an additional $1,025. Additionally, in this packet, I've included some of the documents that came in the legal packet that they sent us. That includes the warranty deed for the purchase of the property. It includes a legal description of both the simple sale parcel, as well as the temporary easement parcel, and the plat drawing for the project itself. More than anything, we just wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions that they may have. We've asked Mr. Quakkenbusch from Barnes &amp; Thornburg to be here to help with those questions, as he understands the legalese behind it a whole lot better than I do. But with that, we'll open it up to questions.
One of the questions I have, first of all, I think this is my fir-, have we talked about this before? Is this the first time we're hearing this?
Yes, this is the first time it's been brought to the board.
Okay, so that's a matter with me of concern. And then number two, who is "they" that told us? What names do we have from the city that told us this?
Yeah, so the person I've been working with is Thomas Walker, and he has been assigned the agent for this project. And I can provide contact information to the board.
If you would.
So, when they responded, when we asked them whether they're going to use the property for, they responded, "No." Was that like the final answer, or could we go through like a Public Information Act to get the information?
So, just the "no" was that they couldn't do it under an MOU, and that we would need to sell them the parcel along the road to do the construction project.
Okay, and so, but they're just using it because they need it for, they're gonna need for store equipment for the other area and stuff like that, but... I just don't, I just don't understand, like, the MOU serves the same purpose. If we do have, for, under an MOU, you know, you're still gonna achieve the same goal. So, just for me, it almost sounds like a little, for lack of a better term, Trojan horses? Kinda like a Trojan horse, and you know, you get a little bit of peace here, then later on down the line, you know, it could balloon into something else. And so that's just what I'm afraid of, you know?
I would have liked to have at least seen a present, meet with the city themselves as a representative of the board. I would have liked to have seen that, so that we could ask them any questions that we made between, with the city and the board. We understand administration, but here the board, the governing body, I certainly would like to have seen some conversations.
Sure, good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young, Jeff Quakkenbusch. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. It is not uncommon, unfortunately, when governmental entities are doing street improvements, that they want to own and fee simple any of the improvements that they are going to have to maintain going forward. While an MOU sounds like it should be just as good, and I believe it should be just as good in many cases, an MOU is, as a matter of fact, can be revoked at any point in time by a future board. So, if they have certain maintenance obligations and liability with respect to road improvements, and you would then rescind that MOU, the response they would say is that then they would be held liable for any damage or injury to someone on that property as a result of a lack of maintenance on that property. So, that's gonna be their response potentially. I have not talked directly with the city. We've let that be handled through the school administration so that it doesn't escalate to the point of being a legal discussion. But that's been unfortunately our experience with the past, both with cities and towns, as well as the state of Indiana. Whenever they have a property that they are going to have any responsibility for maintaining, they want to own that property so they have complete and unfettered access to it. So, it's not inappropriate to have further discussions with them regarding that, but at the end of the day, they have the power under Indiana law to take that property from.
So this is imminent domain then?
It is akin to imminent domain, yes. They have done an initial offering, what's called a uniform offer. And then if you don't accept that offer, then they have the opportunity to take you to court and then go through imminent domain proceedings. There is good case law out there, believe it or not, that says that two public entities can't fight over imminent domain property. And so we could potentially win that case if you would go through it, but that would require a lot of litigation. So that is, at the end of the day, Dr. Webster, yes, an imminent domain action that they're proceeding with.
So, if I'm under-, this is common?
This is common for road improvements, yes ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question. So the property in question looks like it goes across our driveway, an entryway. My concern is if they have ownership over that, and they're not maintaining it well, how does that affect us entering and exiting that school facility?
Good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a very good question. We would need to delineate that out further. I just saw the drawings earlier this week, and we would want to talk to them about either making sure that their ownership of their property stops at the driveway and doesn't carry over to the driveway, or that we have easement rights and full and unfettered access to that as a legal document that would be recorded as well. That's a very good point.
Also, oh, go ahead.
With that though, what about maintenance of that part of the driveway? I mean, if we're, you know, if the whole thing needs to be replaced, are we responsible for the maintenance even of that portion of the driveway? Or are we allowed to be, if we want it to be kept up to a certain level?
You should be allowed to be able to do that. You would not be required to do that, however, because it would be owned by them, yes.
As far as the utilities under the, of the, under the ground there, and I don't know if it's same for businesses or government buildings, now, we're responsible for the drain up to the street.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Have they done a survey to see, what is the process if something goes wrong? Like a water main breaks, or you know, you get a bad drain, it backs all the way up. Who's gonna take care of that?
So, this is a stormwater culvert that is already in existence, so they're not adding anything new. They're just replacing a deteriorating culvert. So they're not changing the flow, they're not changing, they're not adding any new. They just have found a culvert that is kind of at the end of its useful life, and they're replacing it, and then they're adding the riprap as in addition to what has already been in existence there to ensure that there isn't erosion in the future.
Okay, okay.
So there aren't, there are no utilities involved, it's just stormwater runoff.
Okay.
And so what's the price again that they're?
$2,700 for the acquisition of the fee simple interest, and then an additional $1,025 for the temporary easement associated with that. And that's based primarily on appraised value of acreage in the area, because they have to do that to be able to do the uniform offer, they have to do it through a appraisal process. And so, that would be what, if you went through imminent domain, and they did, were successful in the taking, then that roughly would be the price that they would have to pay you under state law as well, so.
And lastly, they understand the rules, like if a school district can't have certain things, so I mean, feet away from it, or say, I'll look at this here, and if there was a fire, depending on which way the engine had to go, they wouldn't have anything that would impede or that would block. I'm pretty sure they've done a survey to take a look at all that stuff, correct?
So, if I'm not mistaken, the Early Learning Center, our fire lane is on the west side of the building. So, the fire engines would never enter off of 79th Street on the north side where this is taking place. The fire lanes are all on the west side, entering off of New Augusta Road.
Okay.
Another question, and I guess this one's for you, Mr. Gruber. The purple area that we are basically leasing or temporary involves some landscaping that we have there. Any talk of replacing the landscaping or maintaining that, so that it's not destroyed?
Yeah, so there's nothing in writing that I'm aware of. When I asked Mr. Walker about that, he said they will return everything to as-is condition when they take it over. So if there's grass that is removed, they'll plant grass. If there was a shrub that was damaged, they'll replace the shrub. And myself and my team will keep good eyes on that, and you know, when we have projects like this, I like to take pictures before and after, just to document the condition of the property.
So, the temporary, you said this is a temporary, right?
The area purple is a temporary easement, yes.
Do they have an estimate or a guesstimate of how long it's gonna take to do the repairs?
Yeah, it'll be over the summer. They don't have a completion date, but their goal is to get it done before school starts. Because if they don't, they're gonna be impeding traffic on 79th Street, which is going to impede bus traffic. And so that's their window of construction. They want to get that done before buses roll again.
So is there another added charge to them, if they go past that?
So what we will recommend in the document, we did recommend this, and this is one change that needs to be made. In a temporary easement, you usually want to put an end date in there, so that it's not an open-ended temporary easement. They have not done that yet, but we will ask for that to be put in there. That was one of the questions that we asked, Mr. Gruber, to ask them when they would be finished. And so now that we have that information, the next step would be to add that into the temporary easement. But your, your next question about is there any penalty if they go beyond that? The only penalty is that you can enforce and stop them from being on the property at that point. You can't ask for additional compensation without, without them agreeing to it.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have one additional question. You said the culvert, there is a culvert already there.
Correct.
So I would assume that has been maintained by the city. It was put there by the city and maintained by the city.
I would believe so, I believe so.
So did we already have a memorandum of understanding with them about it?
I think the difference is how far off the road the culvert is coming this time.
Oh, okay, so they're extending it, okay, okay.
With every public roadway, there is already an understood easement, and I'm sure Mr. Quakkenbusch can speak more clearly to that. But the way that I understand it, they're extending the culvert on either side, on the north and the south, so that they get a better turn and flow of the stormwater as it's coming out. So that is part of the reason for it.
I was just wondering if we could operate it under a pre-existing memorandum?
So how valuable is the property to us now?
I'm sorry.
How valuable is the property to us now as a, as a district, and what would we be losing?
My honest belief is that we're not really losing anything. It is so close to the road that there's nothing we could do there anyways. There's not really landscaping that we would want to add there, because it would be damaged by any road salt or plowing that happens in the, in the wintertime anyways.
But we haven't done a formal assessment of what the value is, like a market value, that square feet. We don't know that. My concern is, I just don't know what we want it for.
Yeah, that's.
So that's why, as we're understanding and asking questions, what can we do, a memorandum of understanding? It's because we just don't even know what the future holds. So we're asking, hey, okay, can we do an MOU, something? And that's when we receive the response of, well, no, and we're going to, we're going to take the land. So, that's, but to answer your question, my thought superintendent, I don't know what the future holds, and I just have not, would not be interested in selling it.
The one thing I would point out is that the, while the temporary easement goes more significantly onto the property, the permanent transfer is within the right of way. And so there would be no ability for you to build on that, any, any permanent structure anyway, in the right of way. Even if you wanted to, you could put landscaping and things of that sort there. But you would not be locating any buildings or permanent structures in that. You wouldn't be allowed, you wouldn't get a building permit for that. So, while the temporary easement is coming off of the right of way pretty significantly there, which is pretty common for them to do that, just to want to have enough space, the final acquisition of the additional amount is still within the right of way, so.
And so your best legal advice is what?
My best legal advice is that given the temperament of the city on these things in the past, and the amount of legal fees that you would incur to try and fight that, and given where it is located, it would not be worth fighting.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, thank you both.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Quakkenbusch.
Next, we have Alumni Excellence, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Appreciate the opportunity to recognize Pike alumnus that are doing amazing things in their respective fields. And tonight, we have an opportunity to hear from, even though we couldn't be here, we do have a video, and we will be highlighting Dr. Jamel Hill this evening.
My name is Dr. Jamel Hill. I am a 2009 graduate from Prattville School. I've heard in my last year of medical residency training, the University of Kentucky. My undergraduate degree at Indiana University was kinesiology or science. By the time I got to ID, the program had switched over to a doctoral program. And I was like, if I'm gonna do three years for, after undergrad for physical therapy, I might consider, I might as well consider medicine. Another mentor who I was working with, that suggested me looking into physical medicine and rehabilitation. So the easiest way to think about it is, we're the medical doctors that work for physical therapy. Not unlike high school, I struggled academically just a little bit. And I think the standard that was set to get into medical school, I knew that I wasn't there yet, but I knew that that was the ultimate goal. So my senior year at IU, I applied to do a graduate program. So one of the places that I got accepted was Barry University in South Florida. I got my master's in biomedical science, so I applied to medical school, I was at grad school, and did not get in. And so, during that time, I mean, I was just super, super fortunate to be reconnected with another Pike graduate. Dr. Jerry Smart, he asked me, "What do you think is keeping you out of medical school?" And I told him, "It was a standardized test called the MCAT." And he said, "Well, if that's the only thing that's stopping you, I'm gonna go ahead and, you know, help you out and, you know, pay for a, an MCAT course." I mean, it truly just changed my entire trajectory. That essentially was like my golden ticket to get finally into medical schools. So I stayed very active in the community, finished up at ID Medical School, so I applied to residency. And I was matched with the University of Kentucky. Since we've been here, we've been just sort of getting through the likes part of my training. Fortunately, last week I found out that I will be working in South Florida, and I got into a fellowship to do sports. That is quite a long journey, but I without a doubt did not have done that with the support, mentorship from everything I got from Pike Township, and Pike High School specifically. Coach Spencer, you know, growing up, he was very much so like another uncle to me. He is definitely has always been a person to really challenge me to reach for excellence, even beyond, you know, the wrestling world. But, you know, really try to be really dedicated to my craft, whether that's school or wrestling. And then I would also say, Mr. Dobbs, I started in a purpose as a sixth grader. I guess the year and a half that I was back in Indy where I started medical school, I was still very much so involved in a purpose as, you know, a graduate. Dobbs would call me and say, "Hey, we got this event. I need alumni to come in and come talk," or do whatever. Whatever he needed has always been, "You tell me and I'll show up." And so, it's just been, again, a great experience to be kind of circle around people who really care about, you know, kids in the township, but want, you know, the best. Pike proud was a thing when I was a student. And I am without a doubt, like, ready from year to year when I'm around people, we can talk about high school experiences. I think my high school experience is something that I would love for my children to be able to replicate, just because it was from an academic standpoint, being able to have the ID scholarship or have honors classes, but also have like a rich extracurricular activity base, as well as, you know, phenomenal athletics, you know? I really had to become literate. At the time, I didn't appreciate everything that was opportunity. But it is something that I'm very proud of, you know, very proud to continue that like the city.
Well, I know that Dr. Hill could not be here in a second. I definitely want to give the Board members an opportunity to make any comments. I'm hoping Dr. Hill's either watching live or has an opportunity to view tonight's board meeting and see us highlight him. So I do want to say, Dr. Hill, that we are so, so proud of you, and thank you for, you know, setting the example. For one, future graduates of Pike High School, but then also for the community that just might not know what a Pike graduate truly looks like. So we're always thankful to be able to highlight people like yourself. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the Board if they have any additional comments.
I would say I know Dr. Hill's mom, and I know she is grinning and excited and proud of all his accomplishments. And as a Pike community member, very proud of his continued success and accomplishments of what a Pike product looks like. So, continue your journey, and we are rooting for you.
And I would be remiss if I did not congratulate Dr. Hill, and especially because he's a, he's a young African-American black male. And we get so many stereotypical things thrown at us. And to see that he's reached the pinnacle there in his profession on his way to great things, congratulations.
Oh, sorry. One of the two things that stood out to me there was, one, the overcoming, where he recognized the adversity, recognized where the problems were, and overcoming, and then seeing Pike help Pike. That he found another Pike alumni to serve and to help out. That did my heart well. So, Dr. Hill, congratulations, best of luck and everything. You're gonna kill it going forward. It's awesome.
I'd also like to tell Dr. Hill, it just does my heart proud. I mean, one of the privileges of working in Pike High School is when I see students that have succeeded and struggled, as he said, he had academics, but he didn't let that stop him. He didn't let, he didn't let not being able to pass that test stop him. The financial didn't stop him, and now he's giving back to the community what he has went through. And I just, I just smile, my whole heart's smiling just seeing him up there, so, very proud, thank you.
I would like to add that his whole achievement is commendable, very honorable. But the one thing that he said, which speaks to the Pike is the gift that you didn't know you needed, is to piggyback on what Ms. Wilson and Steve said, is that he, he understood. He said that he had trouble academically. And that is one thing that I would like our students to hear, that are having trouble academically, but look what you can accomplish. That's not, that's not the ceiling, you know, that's something that can, you can overcome. So, commendable, and thank you very much.
And I would say before I take my seat that Dr. Smart was one of my classmates. He and I ran on a record-breaking four-by-one-hundred team, and I bet Dr. Smart, I don't, I don't talk a whole lot, because I don't look like much now, but Dr. Smart would probably say that I ran the first leg because I was the slowest one on the team. But I would say it's because I had the quickest start, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Next, we have Board of Finance report, Mr. Foster.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Young. According to Indiana Code 5-13-7, 5 through 7, the Board of Finance must reorganize annually in January, with the Board President and the Secretary typically serving as the President and Secretary of the Board of Finance. In your packet, you'll find the written report assessing the financial conditions using the distressed unit appeal board, or DOAB, annual financial indicators, the annual investment report from the Treasurer, and a funding floor notice. Excuse me. The written report provides a narrative along with the DOAB charts that provides more context and details. If you have any questions, please refer to each chapter. Moving on to the investment report from the Treasurer, all investments are made in accordance with the statute, Indiana Code 5-13. Indiana local government corporates such as the Hoosier Fund are allowed under the statute, Indiana Code 36-1-7. As you may realize, the federal funds rate peaked in the end of 2023 at 5.33% and has declined to 4.33% at the end of 2024. And you may be aware that the federal funds rate has a correlating impact on the rate of investments. The investment strategy we utilize here is kind of a layered approach, layered in terms of liquidity. The first level is the Huntington Operator Account, which is basically our cash on hand. The interest rate at the Huntington Operating Bank Account is at the end of January 1st was 3.15%. This is down from 4.25% at the end of 2023. The next level of liquidity is called the Hoosier Fund. It's an interlocal statewide agreement investment pool, as you short-term, medium investments, but still very liquid. End of the year at 4.8%. This is down from 5.4% at the end of 2023. The next level of liquidity is a certificate of deposits. These are time deposits, medium and long-term investments. We work with Baker Tilly in a competitive bid process. We evaluate investment options, 3, 6, 9, 12, and sometimes longer investment terms. These sometimes called ladder approaches, like rungs on a ladder. Last item on your packet is the funding floor notice. This is a new requirement this year. Please reach out to me if you have any questions. I'd like to recommend approval of the organization of the Board of Finance as presented.
Well, it's not an action item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right now, so, but we will go to any questions or comments. Alright, with no questions or comments, thank you very much, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
That concludes our reports to the Board. Now, we will move on to our action items, starting off with the action item A. Minnesota's Reorganization Meeting, regular meeting, January 23rd. Minnesota Reorganization Meeting, regular meeting, January 9th.
I move we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
All right. Since we have a first and a second, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have action item B, District Performance Goals, Dr. Young.
Good evening again, Mr. President, members of the board. I recommend the approval of the district performance goals as presented.
So move.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? With no questions or comments, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Dr. Young. Action item C, Approval of the Board of Education Policies, Dr. Bishop.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. This evening, I seek your approval of action item C as presented.
I move we accept item C as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? With no questions and comments, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I would like to combine actions items D and E, and there will be a statement made about action item E. Mr. Elmore.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young. I ask that you approve action item D, the Human Resources Report as presented.
Due to the confidentiality of the Human Resource Report, there won't be any, we won't entertain any questions or comments, we'll move on to vote. All in favor for action item D as presented. Oh, I'm sorry.
Point of order. We have not made a, we don't have a motion on the floor for item D.
Sorry about that. Can we get a first and a second?
I move we accept item, letter D.
Second.
First and a second. Now we can move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action item D passes. Point of order, the statement for action item E, please state that, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Young, I am not recommending action item E at this time.
With that statement, we are instructed, we do not have to make any action or any votes toward that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item F, Request to Seek Bids, Middle School Corridor Project, Mr. Gruber.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young. I am recommending your approval to seek bids for the middle school corridor project as presented.
So move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question, maybe not on this one, but including that, I noticed your, I noticed the work that's going to be done. Did we, did we take a look at that ceiling and stuff down there at Snacks Crossing?
The ceiling and stuff at Snacks?
It was, it was the ceiling that was leaking and damaged down there too, because this is on the...
Yeah, so Snacks Crossing has had a couple different valleys fail. We've done temporary repairs there, where we came in and we put a, an aluminum base underneath all of the shingles and underneath the winter, the snow and ice shield, new shingles on top. But then, the board has already approved a new roof that will be going on at the end of the school year. So a new metal roof will go right on top of the existing roof, and that's a 60-year roof. So any existing leaks that may still be lingering, they will be gone, start of the school year next year.
They should be gone.
They should be gone.
We expect for them to be gone.
Is that being communicated with principals in the buildings and things? Are they aware of that?
They are aware of the roof project, yes.
Okay. Okay. That's all the question I have.
Any more comments or questions? We'll move on to vote for action item F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber. Next, we have like to combine action items G, H, I, and J. Mr. Greg Foster.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. I recommend approval items G, H, I, and J as presented.
I move that we accept items G, H, I, and J as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
I do have one comment. So on item I, one of the contracts is to, a contract with CIESC to purchase buses. My wife does work for CIESC. She does not work in any capacity to do with selling the buses and does not get any kind of benefit whether or not we do that. We consulted with legal counsel to say, make sure we've dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's and that there's no conflicts. But in full transparency, just wanted to let everyone know that.
Thank you for that full transparency, Mr. Hooper. Any more questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to vote for action items G, H, I, and J. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Lastly, board member items, Ms. Wilson.
Well, Dan, it's been a pleasure to be aboard this board. I've learned a lot, and one of my takeaways is the fact that we have students out there that are making Pike proud. And it makes us feel good to know that all the work that the teachers from elementary all the way up to high school have done their job. And he is a shining light in times when we are really doing some struggling. So to that, I say, it was great to see that film, a video film. And I'm just proud that I'm a part of this organization to be able to see something like that.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mr. Hooper.
Yeah, I have a few things. First of all, I wanted to thank Ms. Dorsey. She sent a notice out to the entire Pike, Pike family about a former teacher in the district who passed away. Bobby Brokaw, she taught for 10 years at Fishback. Bobby, Bobby and her husband Brian are very close personal friends of ours. We worshiped them for years at the same church, known them for probably 20-plus years. And so thank you, one, for keeping on top of our Pike family and what happens with them. And just want to pass on prayers and condolences to Brian and their two kids. I know it's a tough struggle, and so appreciate that. Also wanted to, you know, when you're on a school board, I kind of feel like all schools are a little bit of family, and the tragedy that happened in Nashville at Antioch School, just want to, again, pass along prayers to them and their community. That is everyone's greatest fear, and never want to have to experience something like that. These last couple of weeks, I did have the opportunity to do a couple of things that were pretty fun in this capacity. So I had the opportunity to volunteer with the food pantry. And so wanted to really commend Ms. Ko. She does a fabulous job organizing that. Worked with her and Ms. Mitchell, and Mr. Jacobs was there as well, and then several members from the ROTC. So it was wonderful working with them. And I got to visit the robotics team. I kind of crashed one of their practices. I didn't crash anything, but got to check out one of their practices. And it is phenomenal, the things they're doing with those folks, the skills they are teaching them is, it's gonna be life-changing for them, the skills they're learning. And lastly, I do want to thank all of the donors, and particularly point out the donations that, you know, PTEF made, the Pike Township Educational Foundation. Last year, they gave $19,000 in grants and $71,000 in scholarships to Pike Township. They do have Pike Treasures coming up on March 15th, the Ides of March. So I have invitations here for all the board members, and you, Dr. Young. Want to pass them out and kind of challenge you guys, we filled our table of eight. So I want to challenge you guys, if anybody'd like to match that, fill a table. And if you can't make it, that's okay, you can buy a seat, donate it to a teacher. They would love to go, and so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Dr. Wester.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Gruber charged it to my head and not my heart, my mind and mental state. Forgetting, I was intended to point out too, also, what's Mr. Gruber, the signs. Our signs, especially too in particular, over at South and North, look, they're pretty bad. They're faded. When we go down, when you ride down the road, they just look bad. So if we could get some attention to those.
Yeah, and so that has been approved by the board. Those funds are there. One of the things that Mr. Gruber asked me was, were we going to hold off on those until we get out of electronic signs? My answer was no. So we're aware of that, and do you have a timeline on that?
It'll be this spring.
This spring.
Okay, good. Good, good. And like anything else, as Mr. Hooper stated, and we're so appreciative for both Mr. Hooper and Mrs. Wilson, what they bring to the board and the value already. Again, but personally, I pray every day for our school district. Not only do we have children here, but we have grandchildren in the district. That's how sincere, strongly, we believe in the district itself. And I pray every, every day during my time for their safety, our children, our teachers, our staff. And yes, hearing, matter of fact, if you didn't hear the media clipping, it just, it just broke my heart to hear people, children screaming in the cafeteria during this shooting. And it just broke my heart, and I'm grateful that, that we have not experienced that. And so we continue to pray to the good Lord that he shows us mercy and grace continuously. So we're thankful and we're grateful. And say something nice to someone this weekend. You never know, your words might talk them off the edge. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wester. Mrs. Barnes.
Yesterday, I had the pleasure to represent our board at the District Wellness Council with Mr. Jacob and his team. And I'm happy to report that our schools are currently preparing applications for America's Healthiest Schools Award. If you recall yesterday, we, not yesterday, last year, that we knocked it out of the park. We did such a phenomenal job. We were well represented, not only in the state, but also in the country. And so just know, fellow board members and Dr. Young, that the schools are preparing once again, perhaps to bring home even more than we did last year. Also, in that meeting, I just want to tell everyone, mark your calendars for the Red Devil Dash. It's coming up on May 17th. And maybe as a board, we can all walk the dash. It's a slow dash. Run if you want to.
We're thinking about it.
Okay, well, it's May, it's January. We have a long time to train. Okay. And thank our donors for the support, especially Pike Township Education Foundation.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Ms. Kelly.
Good evening, as always. Pleasure to be with you all. Again, take care of yourself, because we are in for work this legislative season. This season, we are, as a state, as a nation, we are in for work regarding public education and fighting for our students. And so when you have time to rest, rest and refresh so that we are ready for the fight, because the fight is coming. It has started. We are in it. And so definitely want to encourage you to be ready for that. Again, take care of yourself, because if you're not well, you can't help anybody else. So I would say that, and then let's just continue to serve. Pike proud.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Dr. Young.
Well, speaking of fighting for public schools, a great segue, but before I just highlight, last week, I highlighted a particular bill, so I want to highlight some this week. But I'd be remiss, I shared privately with the board members, Happy January, which is National School Board Persons Month. I think it's great that we celebrate groups such as school boards, and we put that on the calendar, because we get busy with the day-to-day, and it forces us to take time, stop, think, and really appreciate people and the roles that they play. So I think a lot of folks see school board members here, and it seems like it's not so bad. But when the mean superintendent's making calls or not making calls about weather and all those types of things, you know, I don't get the call, they get the calls, right? So, because they're over me, and they, people just believe, hey, you know, you can, you can make that work. But, you know, for one person being happy, you make someone else sad. They deal with all of those, those things. And they still come back, they smile, and they're positive, they support us. And the things that we do, which we're really proud of, the boards are the ones that allocate the resource so that we can do those things. So please know, you all are appreciated more than what we can express. And thank you, guys, for your work. And most of all, thank you just for loving Pike. We have board members that are truly invested in this community and its welfare. And every board member, every board across even the state of Indiana, I don't believe that's necessarily always the case. And so we don't have any of that, and thanking God, I thank God for that. Last week, I talked about House Bill 1136. I'll just highlight a couple of things this week that were pretty eye-popping. One, one has been on the books for a while, but during discussion this week in House Bill 1002, there was an amendment that would allow for local school boards to, by vote, turn their district over to charter schools. So that is obviously something of concern, a great tension that we would want to bring to that. Then also, this is not a new one, I didn't reference it last week for time, but House Bill 1501, which deals with facilities and transportation, targeting really the same school districts. It doesn't name the school districts, but when you look at the qualifications, the same school districts that would be impacted by House Bill 1136. And basically, what it says requires schools that meet certain criteria, it would be those IPS, Gary, and those other rural school districts, to participate in the Centralized School Facilities Pilot Program and Student Transportation Pilot Program. So basically, if the bill passes, they will be forced to turn over the control of facilities and transportations to this appointed board, these appointed boards. Obviously, my fear on something like that is, one, that's the start, how would it expand? And what would that mean for us? Obviously, a concern would be, you know, having to transport students that may not be our students through our school community, and who would be responsible? And there's a lot of concerns with that. I think, you know, we have, we are fortunate to have leaders in that area. And we've worked really hard to get to a place where we are. So anyway, that is one or a couple that I think we just want to pay attention to and be sure we speak out about. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. In closing, to piggyback off what Dr. Young said, and, you know, I speak to the army that we have here. You're deputized to go out and educate people in the community of the impact and the dangers of charter schools. And the problem behind the problem are the policymakers who push these agendas. And so I think, you know, everyone can contribute and try and to fight this war just by talking to somebody. Talk to the busy Bettys in your neighborhood or the nosy Nathans. I don't know if they still use those or not, but we can all play our part. And also, really, a good shout-out to the couple that helped, the people that were in the pond with the car. You know, because that's scary. You know, that is very scary. Run up and you see a car and you just jump right in, that is scary. But it also takes a lot of courage to do that. So, and that's, that's nothing to sneeze to. So congratulations to them also. And I want to thank our staff and your resilience coming in during the weather. It was cold, but I appreciate everyone who gets up and warms up the car, fights the traffic to get here, to continue to educate and do your jobs for our kids. We greatly appreciate that. With that being said, can we get a motion to close the meeting? We got a first?
A second, can we get a second?
We got a second?
Second, right there.